They say what?
Why are you ruining it before we get to the real world?
Are we ready? Everybody ready? Okay, I will call regular town council meeting for Ridgeway Town Council Wednesday until the first time twenty five to order and I suppose we will call please.
Counselors Grandley?
Here.
Kroger here. Montague, yeah, Skyler.
Here.
Scoville, here. Mayor Protemblake, yeah, Mayor Clark.
Here. All right, that brings us to additions or deletions to the agenda. Are there any? No, nothing from me.
Nothing from me.
Okay, good. That brings us to deductions consent calendars. Anything on there we want to hold up and up?
Second.
All right, we should be ready. And second, in the call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. That takes us to public comments. Establish time for the public to address council on any issue that's not otherwise on the agenda anyways. Here in the room where I'm zooming have a public comment. Go ahead, unmute. Is that Kim?
Yeah. It is. Sorry, I couldn't figure out how to change my name and I couldn't figure out how to raise my hand without just. Thanks for the time. I'm trying to find my prepared comment. Here we go. There we go. Good evening, everybody. I'm just here joining you tonight with a quick update on the Colorado Energy Office's local impact accelerator grant opportunity. This will be further discussed during the town manager's report later in the meeting. But E collection partners wanted to just chime in during public comment. Because we have exciting news. The CEO has encouraged us to submit a full application. So just a reminder that previously it was just a letter of intent. So now they're they've approved us to the next step stage for a full application, which is a strong indicator that our proposal is competitive. So we're super excited to continue to support Ridgeway with this grant opportunity. Just a quick recap, the impact accelerator grant funds local governments adopting policies that exceed state requirements. So our proposal seeks funding to prepare for and adopt an all electric building energy code. That goes beyond Colorado's twenty twenty six model low energy and carbon code, which positions Ridgeway alongside early adopters like Crested Butte and Lafayette. The match requirement, this grant is only requires a five percent match, which is extraordinarily low compared to most grant programs. They asked in the budget request for kind of a three tiered scenario. So just as an example, if we were to get the five hundred K grant, which is the minimum, then the town match would be twenty five thousand dollars. The two million grant opportunity, then it would be a hundred thousand dollar town match. What the grant funds, and our application includes municipal building retrofits, which would be proof of concept demonstrations, including converting town halls gas boiler over to a heat pump system. Extensive community outreach and training to foster smooth adoption and bring the community up to speed on electrification. A public incentive program, which is very similar and modeled after our current green grants program, which even under the constrained smallest budget, that program would get about three hundred thousand dollars. And technical assistance for policy development and implementation. So just quickly, our requested next steps would be for council to consider during your budget retreat this coming weekend to consider commitment to the required match. And thus provide us with approval to proceed with the full grant application, which is due November fifth, I believe is the exact date. It's early November. With the awards would be announced in December. And just a reminder, this grant directly implements the town's net zero by twenty thirty resolution with minimal town financial burden, while demonstrating climate leadership and financially supporting our community through the transition. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Anybody have any questions for Kim? Pretty exciting. The temple is amazing. So thanks for a good report. Any other call comments? Right here in none?
Hello?
Oh, yeah, we got somebody else. Trace, go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry. I couldn't figure out how to wave my hand. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, great. Thanks. So um, I was realizing that in our neighborhood out here in River Park and Parkside that with the wonderful addition of the new soccer field, we've kind of lost our doggy play area and I don't know if there is going to be a dog park coming back there. But I just decided I would like to really ask the town to look into maybe next year's budget or twenty seven's budget and really think about the Parkside Park. I know there's been a lot of talk about the solar farm. And I just want to proactively ask that we 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 start to look at the budget for the park and I was getting a lot of support in the neighborhood and I decided, you know what, I'm going to do a petition. And I did a petition and I put it out on Facebook last week or this weekend. And I already got a hundred signatures of people that would also like a park. So that that's my request. I'd be happy to send that petition to you and I I know the town doesn't have that much money, but I'm really I'm playing the long game here.
Trace, just to clarify, when you say the Parkside Park, are you talking about Green Street that we did the master plan for? Or are you talking about this green space in the subdivision?
Um, I'm I'm talking about the Green Street Park. Basically, I I'm not sure where we're at with the solar. I'm not fighting that in any way. Please don't take me the wrong way. I'm just saying, I I thought there was a little bit of money in the budget this year for possibly a path in the Green Street Park. So I'm wondering if we can talk about using that money. I think it was like a hundred and something thousand dollars I had heard to put in a walking path. And I I'm also asking that we we looked at future budgets to to make the the Green Street Park happen. And I'm also asking that we maybe add a dog park into that that master plan.
Okay. I would just try to say when we finish the Green Street master plan, it was my thought all along that we could try and do at least some trail work as soon as possible. And I think that'd be a thing for us to discuss in discussions coming up. So definitely that is something I'd like to see happen soon as well. As far as dog park, we'll have to just have a conversation about it. And and yeah, we'll we'll just try to figure out how we can raise money for things like the climbing structure and and the more interactive components, but doing some some minimal trail work to make it user friendly would certainly be something that shouldn't be that hard to pull off.
And I and I do agree that with all the work that we've done on Frontier and Green Street, one of the things we need to do is identify where a dog park, if not money for it. That's the user group that has come forward in each of these processes and hasn't been accommodated.
Yeah, and and how do we like initiate, you know, looking for grants?
Well, that's what that's why my first comment was we need a where and then then it's a lot easier to to do the next piece.
Gotcha. Sorry, it's a little hard to hear.
That's okay. I'm sorry.
We definitely have a phone for yourself. We definitely have staff capability for doing some looking at grants now. Stand in the right place. And I don't even, I think the dog park was considered as part of the master plan. It's not. So would it likely require?
That is why we need, that's something we need to think about it because we've been asked this.
Yeah.
In multiple processes, we we just can't. Yeah.
Find the right place. That's the right place. Well, I think that's great. Therese, thanks for being here. If you want to forward the petition to Pam Craft at the clerk's office, that'd be great. And we'll definitely take it into consideration. Thank you. To Therese, I have one question. Have you gone to the HOA, even the River Park HOA, to see if there are possibility of the dog park in the local green spaces that are adjacent to Parkside?
Yeah, you know, I I haven't. I I I think that's maybe a conversation we could have. Yeah, I don't know the legality. I don't know who'd be responsible for cleanup and all that sort of thing. But but I think I think we should talk about all of that.
Yeah, I would suggest contacting Sean Tell, at least introducing the the concept of the idea and see what she kind of guidance she gives you because there are numerous open spaces, you know, in River Park or adjacent to Parkside that may be good candidates for as well. And I know there's a lot of dogs that actually play unleashed in those areas.
Yeah, I think the, I mean, I then the, you know, I I think a fenced in dog park is really kind of what I'm asking for. That's what we lost at the high school. And there's a lot of traffic and, you know, a lot, you know, we'd hate for a dog to get hit.
She might obtain some ideas on that. So I'd suggest giving her a call.
I will. Thank you.
Thanks, Therese. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Bye bye.
Anyone else? There's anyone else on Zoom? Raise hand feature. Just unmute yourself and let us know your thoughts. All right, seeing none. Returning more, we look back to the agenda, which the next time is some public hearings. I have number ten is a application Garvey subdivision, Blackberry subdivision, lot seven, Reece Scott subdivision, and lot two of the Anderson minor subdivision, town of Ridgeway, location Marie Street and Amelia Street, S three eighty three Amelia, zone residential, apple fifteen Garvey, excuse me, owners keep Garvey and TBD Marie Street, O C, and the planner Angie is going to this discussion.
And Mayor, I just want to let you know that I plan to recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, sure.
Thank you. All right. I'll move that up. So the request is for a re-subdivision from two adjoining lots to three. Some background here, the current uses are a single family home with a greenhouse, a storage cabin. And there's also a tiny home on wheels. The adjoining property is vacant. And then the applicant keep Garvey is present, bless you. To answer any of your questions. So the properties include two lots that are zoned as residential. And the proposal includes creating lots A, B, and C. Lot C contains the existing home and storage cabin at three eighty three South Amelia, and that's proposed to be ten thousand four hundred and thirty two square feet. Lot B is proposed to be ten thousand five hundred and seventy five square feet. And lot A is proposed to be thirteen thousand eighty nine square feet, which is consistent with other lots in the Marie Scott Village. So the request summary, lot C, well, that contains the existing home and storage shed, which is labeled on the plot as a cabin is shown here. That's the one, you know, with all the structures. And then there's two other structures, the greenhouse and shed that are shown in the easement and the ten foot setback, which need to be removed as part of this request. Because they encroach on both the front easement and the front setback. So a note's been added to the plot to remove those when a building permit is pulled for that lot. And then the tiny home is not shown on the plot here. It's a movable home, and my understanding is that Mr. Garvey is still deciding on where it's going to permanently live and its use. And then a proposed lot A is is vacant. So the master plan categorizes this area as single family neighborhoods. No formal building plans have been submitted for either lot A or B, but the applicant has expressed interest in building single family homes on each of those lots, which is a a use allowed by right in the residential zone. And it aligns with the master plan feature land use map that's shown. Each lot will need water and sewer tap fees and excise tax paid for all lots ahead of recording the final plot. Lot C has an existing water sewer tap that serves three eighty three South Amelia. And then there's some payment toward water and sewer on the other lot that happened with the Marie Scott subdivision. Dimensional standards for lots A and B will be reviewed at building permit. The existing home footprint needs all of the setbacks, but the structure does have a second story porch that overhangs the fifteen foot front setback by nine inches. We do allow eaves to overhang setbacks by up to twelve inches. So it's been considered the same by staff, especially because there's no easement there or anything that's, you know, important about location. And here's another view of the subject property. You can see that there's a lot of vegetative cover in the like sloping areas to the south. And the Ridgeway municipal code does strongly discourage removal of existing vegetation on areas that have a slope of greater than thirty percent. There's some other details about slopes that are less extreme. So we've asked the applicant to include those sloped areas on the plot. And then to also include a note that references the the landscape regulations where that lives. So here's another view. I've included some of these view exhibits that were submitted by the applicant in the presentation. So this is South Amelia, looking west down Marie Street. And then this is the existing home. You can see that overhanging porch and the driveways off of South Amelia. This is a view from Marie Street, looking kind of southeast. And you can see all of the the structures that have been discussed. And then a view kind of from the corner of South Amelia and Marie, looking west, you can see how sloped the lot is. So here's the plot map and page one was included in your packet. It has like all of the signature blocks that are needed. But this one shows you in red the slopes that are greater than thirty percent on each of the lots. And then some other detail like parking and water and sewer service will need to be sorted out with building permit. We do have an easement that was extended as part of this application. So that's that ten foot easement that runs in front of lot seven on Marie Street. So any utility services will be through that easement. And the applicant did receive a will serve letter from SMPA. They were also seeking a will serve letter from Black Hills Energy and did not receive one yet. So by the time, you know, building permit is pulled, if they don't have that, then they might adjust is what they said. So here, oops. Here are the approval criteria. And the applicant, the application was forwarded to referral agencies on August sixth. The referral period is twenty one days, so the due date was August twenty eighth, and all referral comments have been adequately addressed. The planning commission gave recommendation for approval with one condition at the September seventeenth regular meeting, finding that all the criteria were met. And we did receive one public public comment the day of the planning commission public hearing. So I read it into the record at that meeting and the letter's also been included in your packet. It's concerning code compliance issues on the subject property. And a subsequent response from the applicant was also included in your packet materials. And all information has been forwarded to our code official. So the property's been posted, the proper notification has been completed by the town in accordance with the code. And the recommendation is that the re-subdivision is approved with the same condition that was included in the planning commission recommendation. So the recommended motion is on the screen before you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council, from Angie or yourself? Just, do you have a question?
Oh, no, sorry. That's pretty straightforward.
All right, since this is a public hearing, we will now ask Matt Garvey.
Matt, can I first? You're right. Sorry.
You think I was gonna mess it up?
It's not a nice, I messed it up.
He's excited.
He's excited. He's always excited.
Well, you did ask for comments from Angie and Chris.
Yeah.
No, I don't think to add to this, but I think you might know that I had some spam emails that came.
It was a wild thing, yeah.
Yeah, and it was very sophisticated, like I got one from the surveyor as well, and I just hope nobody else gets those. I almost paid forty eight hundred dollars to somebody who shouldn't have gotten it. So I don't know if there's like, I think they got it in the database and it was like every, all the different itemized costs. And anyways.
Yeah, I think what we want to do is make sure that in our application materials for any action that the council is is putting on the agenda, that we put a note at the top saying, please be aware that there are spam emails that are going around trying to get people to pay zoning fees for these actions. There's another applicant last month that was just asking to have an event in the park. They got a bill for three thousand dollars supposedly. And these things should have the term local on them. They're obviously access, I know this is.
I just get ones that say that from you. I'm in a meeting and need to talk, please, whatever.
That's it. That's enough. It's easy, Karen.
Yeah, because it was like.
Passion voices with the.
With name, their names on it and everything. I was just like, well, they're in the system somehow.
I teach people. So anyway, as to the.
Yeah, I understand.
Anything else you want to add?
No, I can answer any questions if anyone has other questions.
Sounds like this is still early. No real plans, just?
No real plans. Like for slates, I'm in, I'm I'm starting to remodel and I have a project in Uray and so I'd like to build there, my house and something later, but nothing yet. Yeah.
Okay, so then, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We will open it up for public on. Anyone make a comment? From the public here in the room or on Zoom. You guys have something else?
Yeah, the the letter to complaints, letter was the person living in the tiny house. And he's going to be moving out in thirty days. I don't know if that. Yeah.
It's in our map.
Yeah, okay.
Anyways, it's okay. He's moving out. I don't see, I don't see the hands up on Zoom. See anybody here in the room who wants to speak? This is a public comment, so I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back up here again.
I would approve the Garvey re-subdivision, finding the criteria set forth in RMC. Section seven, five dash two, J three have been met with one condition. Prior to the town recording, this re-subdivision plot with the Uray County Clerk and Recorder's Office of San Antonio shall be obtained in the remaining water and sewer tap fees and excise tax for all lots should, shall be paid.
Thank you, motion. May I add second, all favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks again, Angie. Beth, you can come back.
Okay.
That takes us to our second public hearing in the evening. Public hearing and second reading ordinance number oh three dash twenty twenty five, section seven dash four dash eight, landscaping relations. Back Angie.
Thanks so much. Look at my notes. This is not working. Sorry. Oh, should I try it? Pass it on? Okay, that worked. All right, so this is the second reading of ordinance zero three twenty twenty five. Some background here is that Senate Bill twenty four dash zero zero five prohibits local governments from allowing installation planting or placement of non-functional turf, artificial turf, or invasive plant species on commercial, institutional, industrial, or common interest properties, street right of way, parking lots, medians, or other transportation quarters. So this is kind of prompted the changes, but as we talked about last meeting, we took the changes further. Staff took changes further. So then state mandated date date for our deadline for compliance is January first of twenty twenty six. Our code already complies with a lot of portions of Senate Bill twenty four dash zero zero five. We prohibit noxious and invasive species. However, due to our allowance of artificial turf in all areas as part of our non-live ground cover classification, that gets us out of compliance with that portion. So this prompted the modifications. But the town's code section as drafted are actually more restrictive in that regard than the bill requires. Town does have the ability to be more restrictive, but cannot be less restricted. So other modifications were prompted just by the issues that both the building official and I have been having with some of the interpretation and and implementation of the regulations. So we do believe that the original intent is upheld. And I wasn't going to go through the entire red line on the screen, but I can run through everything again. But I just want to touch on the wildfire resiliency code once again. It's considered as part of the landscape regulation update, but it's not adopted yet. The code has not been adopted by the town, so it's included as a resource for folks who are designing their landscape plan. So I provided a clean copy and a red line copy of the code in your packet along with the Senate bill and some other extra materials that might help. And I'm just going to run through it section by section quickly. But the changes include, under the intent section, we clarified and edited to make the section slightly more concise. Under applicability, we know that the regulations apply broadly to all construction and change of use projects. We, I lost my section of. Got it. We replace language about the regulation applying to landscaping that affects twenty five percent of the lot to some language that says property or projects which require a building permit and result in a disturbance of more than fifty percent of the aggregate landscape area. And that language is coming from the Senate bill. We flagged the provision as a resource intensive one because staff don't currently issue permits for landscaping projects unless there's a structural component or it's alongside a building permit. So we believe that the modification is appropriate for processing and tracking. Also, in this section is the removal of temporary certificate of occupancy for delay by winter weather. The reason is that it doesn't account for other unsuitable conditions to establish plant materials like water restrictions. And staff believe that the provision is covered in a landscape regulation code section that comes later, which is installation standards and maintenance requirements. We also include mention of the wildfire resiliency code in this section. And it says if the code is stricter, then that's the one that that rules. So if any state provision is stricter than local codes, then those provisions rule. But we mentioned it here, just in case. It's it's already part of our code. Under C, site and landscape plan development, we remove some duplicative language and consolidated submittal requirements that ask for similar information. Under D, water conservation, instead of directing the reader to another code section, we moved the code section about preferred species under D. And then the prohibited species section has been modified to include prohibiting trees with aggressive root structures where like paving is happening to avoid like sidewalk seizing and path issues and tree issues. Under E, landscaping required, this is where we remove the artificial turf as an option for non-live ground cover. And staff drafted the regulation in a way that removes artificial turf as an option altogether. As we talked about last time, not just the areas required by the state. So I added more to the staff report on this topic. Part of it was pointing out the Senate bill language that kind of talks about the negative environmental impacts of artificial turf. And then the second point is about administrative flexibility to allow installation of artificial turf, which came up last time. As drafted, deviations in an amount of ten percent can be granted at the administrative level, but waivers cannot. So any request for a waiver from the standards would have to go to a public hearing setting with the board of adjustment. So that's the option for any of like those unusual circumstances.
And what is the difference between a waiver and a? So what is the difference between a waiver and a?
Like a variance?
Well, you said that ten percent can be granted, the deviation can, what, what's the deviation in a waiver?
A waiver is related to like a well, the administrative part wouldn't allow a waiver from the regulation. It's just a deviation based on the amount of like coverage. So the deviation
So since it's saying, this is proposing zero for residential, it's not a waiver for sure. Yes. Or sorry, it's not a deviation.
Yeah, because de- uh, deviation would have to do with like the dimensional standards, like the amount of square footage that's affected. The waiver is just allowing something that wasn't previously allowed. And so, so staff wouldn't be able to process that after the board adjustment.
So is there another slide?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm controlling it. Um, couple more modifications I'm just gonna talk about. I know you have them in your packets, so they're not on the screen. Also in the section, the same section E, uh, we explained that turf used to meet the live ground cover requirement has to be functional turf only. And then we cleaned up the table that helps you with the calculation for the various types of landscape treatments, which are live ground cover, non-live ground cover trees and shrubs. And then under F, general landscape standards, we changed, um, we tested the species diversity of trees under the tree section and increased the diversity required. Uh, we also allowed shrubs and decorative grasses in a three gallon size instead of the required five gallon minimum. And that just allows more options and diversity, um, that can maybe be sourced locally. And then we also included a note about fire awareness and admission risk associated with certain types of mulch. And included a note that artificial turf can be allowed on public recreation areas or sports fields. Um, and then where the section discusses fencing, we reference the fencing regulations of the code, which is seven, four, six, F. Under exceptions and deviations, um, this is where that administrative approval section is um, included. And then under installation and maintenance, those standards were pretty clear, so we didn't suggest any modifications to that part of the code. So those are all the modifications. Um, if anybody in the audience wants to see them, they're in the packet materials. And then I also went through the whole red line at the last, um, meeting on September tenth.
Thanks for taking the initiative to, uh, clean up the stuff that was unclear.
Sure, my pleasure. Uh, okay, so the text amendment approval criteria on the screen for you there, your consideration. And at the August twentieth, twenty twenty five regular meeting with the planning commission, uh, there was public hearing was held for the text amendment. So all this background and code updates were presented by staff and the planning commission did recommend approval of the text amendment with some modifications that have been carried over and presented to you today. They're also on the screen if you wanna know specifically what those are. And then it was introduced at the last town council meeting and let that staff recommend that town council adopt adopt instead of approve. Sorry about that. Um, ordinance oh three twenty twenty five on second reading.
Excuse me, Craig. Are there any questions up here from Angie? Or is it for other staff members?
I'm just still concerned about completely disallowing any turf on residential property. Everything else looks great.
To revisit that, but first let's, um, since you guys are being questioned for stuff, um, and we don't have an applicant in this case, um, I will open up a public comment. If there's any public comment either on Zoom or in the room, this is if you're free of just unmute yourself if you're on Zoom or right, going once, going twice. I will close public comment and bring back up here for deliberations. Uh, just to point out, there was so I don't know, there was discussion last month about whether that complete prohibition is, is reasonable or not. We can continue to have a discussion or someone can make a motion.
Do you think we we do have the ability to offer a waiver in a public hearing? So while we can't administratively do it, there is a remedy.
I just don't think it should have been prohibited. So I just see that it's just that it didn't need to happen.
I agree that it probably didn't happen to be completely prohibited. I am all for everything within this. I am for, you know, outline of the turf, um, commercial spaces on town spaces on any forward facing public laws. My immediate mentality just goes straight to the backyard being the dog owner. You know, my little thirty foot by twenty foot paradise of plastic grass and I am aware I am aware of the environmental implications of plastic. Very much so. Um, I do appreciate the fact that there's a waiver option. And, you know, it's, I appreciate that and that's important. I'm just speaking so that my opinion can be heard. Uh, basically nothing else. I'm not trying to convince anybody of otherwise, just I feel it's important that it should be said that it does seem like the flat prohibition of the turf is potentially a step too far. And I'll just say that to be heard. I'll counter that to some extent. In that if there is a waiver process in place, that there is a demonstrated need or desire that waiver, that we'll probably strongly consider that in a case by case basis, but prohibiting it to me is consistent with a lot of our environmental stances and our sustainability stances that we have as a body approved and, and support. So I think it's as long as there's the ability to have that exception where it's requested. It's just a statement, uh, as it relates to our stance on the potential, you know, harm of using plastic. So it, it just becomes a in my mind, a statement embedded in the code, but, um, for the ordinance. Nonetheless, there's, when there's need of elderly couple has need to have that in their backyard, there's, there's a path for that. So it's not a, a hard stop. It's just a, it's more of a, um, position, I think.
I also would argue that yes, it is an individual choice, but a lot of choices that we have historically considered to be individual choices that don't impact others. The more we move forward in the world, we are finding microplastics everywhere. Um, and so this is a move that Ridgeway is making that says, no, we really shouldn't do it unless these are the circumstances are extending enough for it to be heard in the waiver process. But I think now I'm just rehashing the conversation we had last.
And I, I think it is, I wasn't here, that I believe that, uh, we can you know, if this comes up time after time after time after time, we can revisit, we can make an amendment, but I, I think that not having more PTHs in the world are, is a pretty good thing to do.
If I could help you understand parts of the conversation last month, it's that maybe it's going a step too far in saying that it can't be allowed anywhere without waiver. But there were many of us up here who felt like just basically that the state mandated then was really based on environmental impacts of microplastics and PTHs and all of that. And state didn't go as far to restrict it to residential as well, basically because they knew the path stated that. Uh, we feel like a number of some here felt strongly enough that it's really important that we make a, a complete, um, ban on it simply because of the environmental impact of plastics. And there are other alternatives. It's not like artificial turf is the only non-alien or hypoallergenic chemical for the landscape too, you can use in, in another case. So into further this point, the unintended effects of the neighbor who doesn't want to have plastic from the neighbor who was putting plastic in. It's not without impact, so. Anyway, we're now at a point where somebody can make a motion.
I move to approve ordinance zero three dash twenty twenty five, amending section for seven dash four dash eight landscape regulations that Ridgeway means.
Motion made in second, put on favor. Be opposed? So, uh, forty two. Thanks, everybody. Good discussion. That takes us to
Thanks Angie.
For a diagnosis, it says definition of non-functional artificial turf is artificial turf that is not functional. All right, that takes us to policy matters. Number twelve is the presentation of the draft twenty twenty six fiscal year budget. Thanks.
So you all have the draft budget in its form.
Hey, well, were you? Or somebody tapped on your
This one's
Oh, it's set where you had to hold it, so.
Soft hands.
On the side, right here. Other side.
It's on the other side.
Uh, the council has in, in their packet, the, uh, draft budget as it is in its current form. The presentation of the budget is to meet state statute, which requires that the budget be introduced by October fifteenth, but each fiscal year. So this budget is of course not complete. This is a working document. It does contain all of the audited numbers from twenty twenty four. So those numbers that are in this document are the actual audited numbers. And the ending fund balance of each of these funds carries forward to begin the estimated year end for twenty twenty five, which then carries forward to the beginning of twenty twenty six. So then I'm gonna explain the document itself. Some of you have heard this, but just, uh, for any new council members. The budget is defined by three different funds. The general fund is the general operating part of the budget. It includes departments. And it goes administrative, which would include town manager, town clerk, planning, building, those types of functions. Also, areas in there include town council and initiatives that council funds for nonprofit groups. There are streets and maintenance. Then there, it goes into parks, facilities. Then law enforcement and then there's the ending numbers that total that whole general fund. Those numbers are the ones that I was referring to will carry over from year to year. So the amounts that are actually cash, cash access that the town had at the end of twenty twenty four will carry into our ending fund balance of twenty twenty five, be included in the revenues and expenditures and that ending fund balance will carry forward to start off twenty twenty six.
Can I ask a quick question, Pam?
Yes.
Should that last column twenty six be draft, not adopted?
This is a draft document. It's on the top corner. It touches on the draft and the stage of the document. So the document itself, that column is going to be what council adopts. So the numbers that are in here right now are just my numbers that will go to council and be discussed. Um, one of those major means is this is out of me. So the Jim, Jim, do you have any other question? So then we go into the water enterprise fund and the sewer enterprise fund, which are standalone funds that are required by state statute. They follow the same format. They have the actual numbers from the auditors in twenty twenty four that ending fund balance carries over into the estimated year end for twenty twenty five. And then that will carry forward into twenty twenty six. The revenues and expenditures are shown on one sheet on the water and sewer enterprise where as on the general fund, the revenues are on a sheet by themselves. The general improvement district number one follows that. This is the one and only improvement district that has been formed in the town. This was formed in the early nineties for the paving of what was known then as Ridgeway USA. These funds were left over from the original paving of that project and are being held and have been used for any repairs that need to be done over in that area. Then we go into worksheet pages that are called capital project funds. And these are standalone projects. All the revenues and expenditures for those projects are contained on these sheets. If there are town contributions, then they will go from these sheets into the fund that they're affected by. So if there is a project that is coming up, being funded some of the contribution from the waterfront, it will show at the end of the water fund budget, same with general fund. That's how overview of how these pages lay out. So if we go into the document itself, the general fund is a perfect example. The first page of the budget is revenues. The total revenues are at the bottom of the document and the total resources include that beginning fund balance that I talked about. Then we go into each of the departments within the general fund. They each have their own total or their, and those subtotals go to the last page, which was, which is on page seven for the total general fund expenditures. Underneath that lies any transfers to capital projects. And then the difference between the revenues and the expenditures bring us to our ending fund balance. So this document council will see again on Saturday. We'll be working with this with the capital improvements. Um, we'll be looking at lists of items that staff would like included in the twenty twenty six budget, items that we would like council input on. Right now, the items that I've included in the twenty twenty six budget itself are things that are straightforward, like phone and electricity, things that are known that are always around the same amount of money, or if they're changing like contracts with our IT, that those would be reflected in here. But the larger items are not in this document. While we talk about those budget. And then not everything for estimated year end is included in here because I wanna wait to get closer numbers as we move closer into the process. Okay, questions on the document itself?
Questions for Pam? Just as usual, amazing amount of work. It's just a big
I do have one quick question because I know it came up last year. Did we leave? Did we give ego action partners its own line item or is that something we're gonna have to discuss as part of the community initiatives?
It's on you, Jen, it's Saturday.
Yeah, it can be discussed, yeah.
Great. As, as you all know, this is mainly just to
Well, the eco action partners does have a line item. I'm not sure what your question was.
So last, last year we ran into an issue where ego action partners drives our my action plan and they went through the community initiatives application process that was led by our community members, which was great and wonderful. And the discussion that we had at the council after that they really might not be a community initiative in the same way.
Yeah, no, the council initiative.
They didn't complete an applications for a bank program process, but they did submit, they made the spirit of an application by submitting something for the role of December on Saturday. It's on the agenda. program process, but they did submit, they met the spirit of an application by submitting something for the role to consider on Saturday. It's on the agenda.
Okay.
Theory and I met meetings with the Eco Action Partners representatives to kind of figure out the best path forward.
Yeah.
Or subject to approval by, by you all.
Right, because we discussed last year, they shouldn't be one of the council initiative. It's pieces of the pie. Yeah, yeah.
Pam, these chairs are incredible. An incredible improvement. Thank you. Take me round with the praise.
Last one, did you have?
Yeah. Good move.
Well put. All right. Um, other questions? I mean, this is basically just meeting a statutory requirement, but to be introduced by October 15th, it would be that. But it's submitted in tonight, so I don't think.
And you'll be seeing it again on Saturday. More in depth.
A little bit more. You'll then buy them.
No.
No.
More things to discuss.
No, at that point, we'll be having discussions and all-star planning and based on.
You'll just go. Okay, great. I don't believe we need a motion on this. We lost the direction. So introduced. All right, that takes us to I remember 13, I believe it is, yes, review and action on target funding amount for the 2026 grant. Tidy discussion.
Yeah, I'll take that. Thank you, Marissa. I just mentioned applications for the 2026 Ridgeway Community Grant Program. Were due September 22nd. We're going to perform just like in the last year, net, many big tasks, but in all submitted applications and making recommendations of funding on those applications that were received by the deadline. In order to do that, that committee needs a target funding amount that that target, there were going to be things to be set by you all. So the staff report has a, has a chart that shows council initiative, uh, funding amounts and then community grant program. Granted amount for 2025. So hopefully we've got a chance to kind of look at that over the last six years. Staff is recommending that the amount to exceed amount for the 2026 community grant program equal 2% of the general fund operating expenditures in the 2025 budget, which is all we have to really go off of at this point since 2026 budget is somewhat bare bones is, and just went over. That 2% equates to just worth of $98,000, $98,225, which would be more than the target funding amount that was approved last year. So the committee will be scheduled to meet in the next several weeks, most likely mid to late October. Like I said, we'll review all the applications, make recommendations for funding, a summary of all those funding recommendations will be forwarded to you all for you discussion, consideration, most likely at the budget workshop that we normally hold in like late November, uh, just before Thanksgiving, but that has been slated for early December, right after the Thanksgiving holiday, just to give them just given everyone's schedules. So it's that network session workshop that staff will give the final direction for, well, for final preparation.
Great. Questions for Preston? Just another statistic to end all this statistics. I did the average of the five years preceding 2025, we came out to 2.1%. So the 2% seems reasonable from, just based on the historical.
Or satisfaction?
Yeah. I'm not sure why we dropped to 1.93 is our target last year. Can we call this discussion?
It was probably when we got the final budget number, when we set that number, it was probably two.
Oh, I see. So this is the.
That would be the answer.
And what, I just. Yes, so Washington knows that to spread the dollar. So, so which is basically 2%.
Yeah, sorry. For 2025, the recommended and remember, I remember somewhat that they recommended about what target funding was way below the it was 92,000 or something. But.
Isn't it 92.5?
Yeah. And by way of this conversation, so 92.5? And then maybe couldn't meet 92.5, it gave back to 95. So that's how it's responded.
Now they give her something.
I was on that ad hoc committee last year. And I don't believe I now qualify because I'm on council. We should.
I'll move to target up to 98,225, community grant program funding. Yeah, review committee is from the initiative.
Second.
Motion made in second, in favor.
Aye aye.
You opposed? This is Samus Banks. Takes us to 14. It is review and action on software as a service agreement, so A S. Where use concept community self-updating community calendar software. I think vocalists at this presentation, is it just last month from Tara and Ari? Two months ago? And Preston took it away.
Yeah, that was pretty much it. Last month, uh, we received by and from you all to advance this, this really cool King Calgary initiative that I think we all were in agreement has been sorely needed for quite some time. Uh, so this is somewhat, uh, question, you said word of the safe profile, but we need that this, uh, this step to single forward the agreement. Uh, the kicker is the county just informed us a few hours ago that they are pulling out of this initiative. I'm going to find this. Sounds like they're, they're dealing with somewhat of a budget deficit. This is one of those items on the chopping block. Those are my words.
So save the whole county.
With that increase of our share?
So that will increase the share and, uh, so.
Can we have pending final decisions from the county? Like they're pulling out, but their budgets also not, like everybody's budgets aren't finalized. Can we sign based on our current agreement, at which point we'll have to have a discussion.
And how much of the funding will change? Again, if we discuss funding without them, we approve that and pack the two laws to the smaller one.
So, uh, to answer the question about funding, uh, let's see. Do you remember the town will be the fiscal agent for this? So the town will pay out of pocket for everything and just set up as an reimbursement with the agencies year one. Well, in year one, out of pocket cost to the town would be $7,787.5 cents. Year two, almost similar, $7,127. And then in year three, $7,466.5 cents.
And that's with the county?
Whether it's without the county.
Without, it's page eight under the 514 on our ground books. So basically our, our P's went from about 5,000 to 75. It's not crazy change.
Um, and then after your free were paid, we're going to be keeping you. It's just a three, this is just a three-year lease agreement. We figured out again that.
I still think it's important to think.
Sorry, that was a foolish question.
No, it was a foolish question.
I loved it. I love the.
He's got positivity in that, yeah.
Then we're all paid up and get forever. Okay.
Interesting, their staff has concerns about financial implications. Totally, they're saying the county's moving for up there. Perhaps, uh, they'll, they'll be willing to reconsider as we get, you know, months down the road and because we're getting that, but. But my annual implications don't concern staff.
That's it. I, I mean, I have to say I can't believe 5,000 bucks. The major difference in county budget.
Yeah.
That's a drop in bucket. Um, I mean, I haven't heard from the city yet, but I would hope that they're.
That's not, uh, like. I assume they're interested, I hope. Yeah, I hope.
But I think it's really important that we stress to the other entities, how important is this be a partnership? Supports our longstanding need. So.
People from the.
We're going to try to see.
Maybe we cancel that and pay for this.
All right.
If there is, um, if there is, the future becomes events that the county must turn around, would you think that they might be loving at all to contribute? Because if, I'm, I'm very happy to have this. I think this is something the community has needed for a long time. However, if in the future they have events that they want on the calendar, wouldn't it make sense for them to pay to play? Yeah.
Yeah, it certainly makes sense. Um, I don't know.
The county's likely to be in this discussion in favor.
Yeah, I mean, they had their work session in public on Monday, at which point cola, dropping cola adjustments for the next year was being discussed. So the fact that they were cutting the calendar is not surprising. So anyway.
No, I'm, I'm not.
Um, I guess, I guess here's my, my question is, I assume as with most of these agreements, there's a, I'm sorry, and I prep for this meeting, this may be not my best. Um, as with most of these, if it's not approved by the other entities. So if we are signing it with the assumption it's us and your A and your A bills, then it would. He said we're signing with, when we're signing with the financial. Right. Okay.
I think if, if that is the consensus feeling and direction, I can convey that to who, I think her name's Cassie with vocalists. And we'll just stand by, see what happens with the city.
Yeah.
I mean, for that, if we need to come back, we're the only entity that's bought in and moving forward, then we can come back and have a conversation, figure out how to how to move forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So just your mic is.
Clear.
Very good. Thank you. Um, yeah, that makes sense to me. Um, I think we should show our, um, support for this separate by agree it's not even. I don't know if we need to additional motion, but just make sure that other two entities hear from us that we really want them to reverse it from the source.
I think you can do a motion in what direction that would be great.
Okay. Well, what's the exception? That, that we have staff to talk to, to the other two governmental entities and assess strongly as possible, but we really would like them to join us on this important venture that we've been trying to do for decades. I'll make the motion to approve that direction.
I'm excited.
All right, motion made in second. Is that clear enough for you, Pam? Sorry. Was that legal, Bill?
Yeah, that works.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Great, thank you. That takes us back to.
15 with 15.
Request to use town right way for the Ridgeway Independent Film Festival Community Walk Run Event. Pam?
This is a request that came in the other day from Riff. Uh, they want to add a walk run event. Uh, as a part of an afternoon event they're doing for the film festival. It's in conjunction with one of their films. I heard from them yesterday that they're going to do the walk run and then come back into the park and then there's going to be some performers, some Native American performers that are going to be in the park. They are going to be on the stage. They're just going to be on the lawn here. So, um, we should probably include that in the request to be in the park. If they're in the right way.
Uh, any other questions? Sounds like Pam's representing Ariel on this. Comments, questions, thoughts? Hope isn't everybody free. Looks good.
Yeah.
I have moved to approve the run walk event for the Ridgeway Independent Film Fest with the addition of performers and park. Seconded.
All right, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? This is Samus Banks. That takes us to review and direction of compensation of town council. As I mentioned. Now, I'm going to show screen.
Hopefully we got a chance to just check out the staff report, pretty, uh, short summary about some of the research that we did, uh, with regard to annual compensation for council members in other communities that would characterize as somewhat comparable and then same goes for members of planning commission. I did update that chart that you see in the in the staff report and updated charts on the screen here. Michelle had a great suggestion about having, uh, having a budget number associated with these communities. So a better picture can be painted about what's being paid to mayors, mayor of towns or vice mayors or council members and of course planning commissioners.
Yeah, that's, that's great. And I didn't think of a percentage, but that's super helpful too.
At least, I think the percentage makes, actually I think the operating plan makes even more sense than population in the same way that counties are classified based on a lot of factors and reputation and blah, blah, blah. That, that is really helpful.
So when you look at it, uh, that is from a percentage angle.
Yeah, so we're pretty right in there.
Right in there, kind of on the higher end.
Uh huh.
Okay, so, okay. Some initial information that I think the conversation item was on the strategic, or is it the strategic plan for 2025 revaluation? So that's why we're here.
I mean, those numbers make me feel like we should stick right where we are, given economic uncertainties and how people feel about things. Like that seems to indicate that we're matching our peers in terms of.
It's there. So it's certainly based on the percentage too. Well, I think I was one of the ones to bring this up. Your, your minutes. My primary concern is not so much from the council. Time the mayor puts into this. So that was really more my concern, council, this ratio is based on council. I think I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't cost much.
But also the amount more that our mayor makes also seems to be, without actually like doing math, seems to be fairly comparable to 50% more-ish. I mean, he's a little over 50% more, but just compared to other towns, yeah, they look about 50% more to mayor. Yeah.
Much cheaper.
So it's a thankless job everywhere.
Yeah, none of us are doing this for the money.
Yes.
And I guess that was based on that. I'm a gentleman, I'm a gentleman.
Well, I probably put more time than most people.
You too, John. The town's lucky to have you. I think this conversation that's been going on in the background caught it in the last couple of years of having a look going forward. You know, we're not going to be lucky enough to have John around who potentially has the time and energy to, to be mayor or is wanted to be mayor.
It's that interesting balance we're trying to strike between making it enough money for particularly a younger person who doesn't have a, a great, uh, income to be able to, to take part, yet not have it be so much that it's people are running just right a month.
Could you, you stated that you put in more time than probably most people would. Could you throw out an average hours per week?
When people ask me that question, I usually say 20 hours. It's, it's at least a half-time job.
Okay.
In terms of webinars, phone calls, emails, meetings. And if somebody says more, someone's.
That's what I'm saying. I think you will be a little lost. I've seen this work.
So we talked about last year too, for council members, making sure. I mean, what, it was 250 dollars. Whatever, well, it would replace your income if you had a job that you worked nights or if you were a parent who needed to hire for childcare during the meeting or whatever, because we didn't want to include someone who would need to take a shift out or hire childcare or something when we're being on the council. So that's why it's even like 250 or whatever it's been paid. But then he theorizes about a point that towns wants a ton more than we do. Maybe else don't, don't get your mom.
Yeah.
Another consideration is, this, this has been the stipends since pre-pandemic. We've had 9% inflation, 5% inflation, we've had, everything goes up, but this has not gone up at all. Question is, I wonder if these statistics on these other communities have moved over time. I know there's a lot more research on that actually to do that, but I'll just bring up that point, listen.
Your job question.
And the other point is, I don't see your ray on here, which is probably our more comparable community. And I was wondering if, if there's other benefits associated, just stipend on some of these communities to get healthcare or some other benefits associated.
Yes, I'm a, I'm going to go that. Yes, I'm a little, I mean, I know that this was just an initial um discussion starter, but yes, um, provide, you know, healthcare often, uh, recreation passes, other other benefits like that. Not all women saw that, I've seen.
Um, I think it's pretty reasonable. I think the mayor ones, you know, it compares, but the problem is, you know, if John ever decides not to do it.
True.
I I.
Yeah, I just worry that with anything that is reasonable for us to put into that spot, we are really lucky with John and we're lucky that John has twenty hours a week to give. Like, the pool of folks that have that ability are really minimal compared to the pool of folks that we were like, you know what, like, they care about Ridgeway and the Ridgeway's best interest at heart. Um, and that's a whole different question, because you can bump that number up, but they're still not going to have the capacity to work twenty hours a week. I hesitate about that number, uh, not because I discount John's time, but because I know a different mayor is actually going to put more stress on staff. And I would hesitate to put that to raise the mayoral pay when somebody's like, I can't actually attend this webinar. I am in a meeting for my day job. Um, at which point, if it's important that Ridgeway get information, we're going to be turning to staff and saying, you can attend that meeting. So that's we we are in a very particular lucky situation right now, but that's a really hard thing to rub.
I'm gonna throw out suggestion to increase the mayors. Let's stipend by ten percent.
I did a little bit of uh quick Googling and in your A, uh, according to a twenty twenty three report from the Plain Dealer, the uh mayor's salary was six thousand annually and twenty four hundred for counselors.
Just so we're on the, you wanted that info, so I got, which might drop their number down at a different percentage because they only got a smaller council.
Yes.
So we're spending more.
Actually, we we agree.
They might be more on five months.
I think they definitely many more of an issue.
I mean, to be fair, I have some evenings where after a long day, I'm like, I know you sometimes creep to expand a fit. But sometimes after eight P M, it's like, oh, boy, you know, I find that self.
That's another thing we've always been. We could do more meetings a month, would that make the meeting shorter? Um, my opinion's always been it just it just grows over time.
I mean, I think.
But we've had relatively short meetings this.
We have to, we have, I mean, my other that I've made is I almost feel like we need additional work sessions. We have all sorts of things that like, we need to talk about that, like some of the visioning things, that's what's like Saturday is a long day, but it's one of the things that leaves me really excited about a lot of stuff that's happening in town is big picture vision that this group gets to have in a public setting and then send it to staff and say, here's your real direction. Um, and I know that.
Quarterly or quarterly?
I don't, I don't know, I'm.
Well, and I was gonna say, for COVID, we had um evolved to a situation where pretty much every month a regular council meeting was the second Wednesday, we had a workshop of some sort on the third Wednesday. Now we look at planning permission of the.
I started from pay increase and now we're saying let's not do pay increase, let's just add a meeting.
Bring it back to.
It's back to what Terry said, yeah, I'm like.
Bring it back here. I suggested ten percent increases fifty two eighty.
Yeah, I think even as a gesture, it'd be nice to raise the mayor.
To fifty two eighty, that's ten percent, that's like what just happens to be not.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, Terry.
It's a my advice.
That's great.
I just want to make sure you recognize that that if you do that, that doesn't just happen.
Yeah.
My surprise.
Kind of like so.
Right.
The next election.
Right, it's like.
Right, it take effect at the time of the election, okay.
I didn't know that, thank you.
So is everyone heard about raising the mayor's second ten percent? Was that about?
Fifty two eighty. Do we need a motion?
Sorry, is this just directly?
It's memorialized in the. So.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, that's right.
So I'm suggesting it took sixty fifty two.
But Terry is pretty attached to his seller.
We're not Denver.
Oh. I mean, my, my, my.
Yeah, let's make it seven.
I mean, is it, is it worth saying we're giving a substantial risk to the mayor, but is it saying like another two hundred? I mean, I I don't know, like, do we just leave council set?
I'm not. You take them all at the same time if we have to do a whole thing.
And we don't have to do ten percent on everything, we can do something, I just, I'm just raising um to Jersey's point, we're, we were like, hey, more of these days. Yeah, I, are we all comfortable with the council position? Because we all just argued for John, right? Nobody argued for themselves, so I'm just, I'm just raising the should we looking at council too.
And we all have various other groups that we are a part of in meetings, um, this.
Time is valuable.
Time is valuable.
It's it's pretty interesting, I mean, I, all these years I've done it, I've seen the council members who is very clear, they have not even read the pack, came into the meeting and they didn't appear to spend any time outside of a regular meeting. So you, I think we can go all do a great, in a great way where you guys all carry weight and put in the time and have your other lives to balance as well, so.
I think it's good to look at these percentages, right? Uh, we're uh even with greater vista and the only ones above us are Mountain Village and Olathe.
But look at Olathe's budget, they are going to, I mean, to compensate people at all is going to be an impact on that.
Right, right. So we're, we're, I mean, for optics wise, we're um, oh, I see Tyra's quite as well.
Vito's big too, their budgets.
Well, and but I would, I would counter you like, you know, comparing us to Olathe. Olathe didn't do two first master plans, I would guess, last year that most of us attended. Um, so.
Well, that's that's a little idea.
I guess updated next year, too, I think.
All of many of the council to participate, regular monthly committee.
Yes, but more time on time or on January, maybe.
Maybe maybe there's a small stipend associated with committee position.
I think that could get complicated and I, I do, I do appreciate that, I think I would entertain some, I'm not, I became something huge, I think of like two hundred bucks, um, you know, thirty two fifty or. Yeah, just something to. Uh, I was just proposing something along those lines.
Thirty six. Where's the monopoly?
Terry, you're not the banker. Okay, let's make a decision to move forward. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know.
I would say add two hundred, so the council's thirty two.
Stump.
That's my suggestion.
Council thirty two hundred and here at
Fifty two eighty.
Fifty, fifty three hundred or fifty two eighty.
Fifty three hundred.
Fifty three hundred. Mayor fifty three hundred, council thirty three hundred. One one.
What about the planning mission? Are we good with that?
Thirty two.
I just bring it up that we address it, I'm not saying whether that, but I think we should increase it.
I think it's fine.
And I'm guessing the NAs mean they don't pay them anything? Yeah, it wasn't available.
It's worse, but they was able to find.
Okay.
Interesting.
Yeah, I was the secretary for Hark and P and Z, I don't remember there being a stipend for that, that's Hark and Tyra, the starting architectural and P and Z. And I don't remember there being any payment for that.
There's not.
It was a long time ago, but.
Mon, Montris is less than. It is, which is at some end. Yeah, I think it's pretty good. Again, back in the day in the nineties, planning commission was a big carrier, it's like so much going on. Like regular meetings to.
I didn't know that there was any stipend when I joined it, I was like, why do I have some paperwork?
All right, so we we done, we we said, uh, we said fifty three hundred for air and for each month is that's how. Then staff will have to come back with, just a general question, when was the last increase?
It was right before I got in council, so so I think I came in in nineteen, spring of nineteen to the raise. You guys have passed it, I'm pretty sure that.
Probably twenty eighteen.
Pretty sure.
I think handful minutes, it's twenty eighteen.
Yeah, that's that.
That seems. Okay, enough on that one, here's the ten.
Wow.
Chris.
Rolling right through.
Yeah, sweet. Takes us to even written verbal reports. I don't know, so the two is the mosquito management report, Ryan.
Just like everyone to give Rodney a round of applause.
Uh, report is very interesting.
Yeah. It works hard with mosquitoes, we had some hiccups this year, I shouldn't say hiccups, it's just small, but uh, Donald's a person that uh gets the board of the county commissioner level. Uh, because we had some challenges working with Ridgeway State Park representatives to control mosquitoes there, and that kind of been very informal arrangement over the years, that's worked well, I can tell that this year to mitigate mosquitoes there, that's a huge, that's a really important area for standing out, yeah, for, you know, not just incorporating limits of town here, store presidential, but as you get closer to murder. So we've had some meetings with state park perhaps, and feeling pretty good about uh getting to a better spot for twenty twenty six and beyond, but beyond that, um, I see some numbers in there for Rodney, he works really hard, uh, no tears, but blood and sweat for sure on a weekly basis. So.
If you're not aware of it, um, the lack of controlling state park this year resulted in uh people who live in uh um Dallas Meadows being just inundated, it was like, and I I can tell you how I lived here in the eighties and nineties, that's where it used to be a town, there were times, you know, you could knock a lot of stuff.
Okay. Well, and there was an issue where they stored the stuff outside. I remember this from a prior meeting, I think I was in the audience.
It was in the. It was in the Plain Dealer.
It was all, okay.
But like even back in the day, it was way, they involved for mosquitoes, truck would drive around with the fog or, I think it was Malafan. On the, and I was like, you'd hear that the thing coming down the street, it quickly closed all your windows and doors.
Yeah.
It was crazy, um, so George Kenny deserves another shout out because he did mosquito control for years before Rodney. And he's passed away, but um, that mosquito control program, the town of Ridge raised by the charter has been hugely successful, you cannot imagine what he's like.
Yeah, my anecdote is for us tubers taking old bridge. Gosh.
Yeah, instantly. This year, yeah, so. Um, give Rodney our thanks for the report. Um, any other questions or comments? It's it's a super valuable.
That was just excellent, and I, it is greatly appreciated, I didn't realize that uh we were once inundated with mosquitoes, this is cool.
The flood aviation all around the county, in fact, I remember going up to my sister-in-law's, somebody, you know, for some abandoned ranches, um, they basically cattle and you go out there and that, get out of the car and then we just hum. Mosquitoes, everybody, this is crazy, so we, we definitely have benefit from this. All right, uh, just to report, we don't need to action on that, right?
Yeah, right, correct.
Uh, so that takes us to the twenty twenty five noxious weed management report from Julie.
Yeah, shout out to Julie, and you can go ahead. Anything with the job, great work from her on uh treatment and uh public town on areas over the summer. Uh, the communication collaboration we get from Julie has been superb over the last several years, and it's always great working with her, so. I haven't tried to answer any questions, although she, you know, she's not online or anything, but um she is great to work with.
It was also a good, interesting report, and that's great that people stepped up at the community gardens as well.
Um, I do believe the county weed board is going to have a citizen position available, so if you know of anybody, you have one person step them down. I can confirm that to Robert. This is awesome, it, it's remarkable how different this uh looks versus three years ago. Right. Like the photos, the actual going out and being around is incredible, so huge thing, huge trophy. All who work on this.
Good stuff. All right, any other questions or comments on that? Then the matter number nineteen is the twenty twenty five strategic plan progress report.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, simply the progress report, you all seen, a lot of y'all have seen this before, the updates in red. Apologize for, I know there's subtitles in there, so sorry. Um, but have you answered any questions about any of these projects, uh, going items initiatives, uh, we'll talk more about this on Saturday. Um, especially in an effort to start, um, helping to get a draft for twenty twenty six ready to go. So took me longer than I would like to to get this ready, I would have loved to have it ready last month, so I apologize for.
It's okay, it's not.
Strategic.
Been a lot of things going on.
Strategic things.
It's it's something I've always really been proud of, but when when you show people this document, the amount of detail, again, it's it's pretty cool, and some of the things that are either completed or efficiently unknown, it's just, it's a
It's pretty spectacular, I did have a question and it's lightly mentioned in the manager's report, and I just wanna I don't think you need to answer it today, um, but on vibrancy and balanced economy, item number seven. Have we done an assessment on how the Four Seasons Buyout will impact the lodging tax and revenue for that in the next several years?
Yeah, like you said, the updates in the manager's report, so now we have, now we're still waiting for all the information from them.
Okay.
I think they told us like Monday, right?
October sixth, I think it's sent in that report.
Yeah, so there is sense for there are two percent increases or decreases, and let's, let's try to get a question.
Well, I mean, theoretically, they should be booked a hundred percent of the time, we should make more money.
But if anything lasts than that. Do we study vision, does it make some from the logic that's?
I don't know, that's, that's my.
I think if it's over thirty day rentals, it doesn't make them.
Then if it's over thirty day rentals, that changes.
Use, use, so there's just a lot of variables that we're trying to understand. We've talked through some already, uh, we like some stuff in writing, it's more formally embedded and just check everything against our regs and our standards and understand the process, so. Monday hopefully, and then uh we'll be giving you all more regular updates based on.
Okay.
And you've kind of already transitioned to the manager's report, but tapped on to that was a press release issued by the Western, some sort of West End coalition, forgetting the name, it was uh from, I think the attorney for Naterita, Sarah, forgetting her name.
Fireman.
Uh, but it was a great uh great press release, not really synopsis, but a look into how all those communities over there kind of banded together to ensure that things are done in a lawful and appropriate way.
Just touching on, that group is involved with an effort that S and P has. Um, we, I hope wait to brand, we got nine point nine eight million dollar grant for twenty million dollars somewhere. Out just, just suddenly outside of Naterita, the road that goes to Dud Creek, which pop up on top of the hill, there is a subway station, it'd be twenty megawatts of solar. We've got the grant still in place after all of the grant cuts from the administration. And were currently being held up by the Montris County Commissioners who have modified a moratorium on solar target to prevent this project. It's it's really unfortunate that the guys or the three floor conservative commissioners who have overridden the planning commission, it's two, two two, yeah. They have overridden the funding commissioner's recommendations to allow this project to go forward by not implementing these highly restricted on a solar moratorium, so if ever you see any notification, I'm happy to send that out from or the comment at the the planning mission number that Montris County Commissioners meetings. This, this would benefit all of S and P, including us, it would be twenty valence of uh lower cost energy that S and P can access through. Through a third-party developer who has leased the property and we've got the grand money to make it affordable. But it's being stymied or stalled by Montrose County. The end particular requirement was that it can't, solar rate can't be within. Two miles of the scenic highway, which is scenic highway is one forty-five. You can't see the solar rate. But it's less than two months, so they put in kind of impossible to overcome restriction. So S and P has, you know, put a lot of time and money, in fact, approved for tri-state to go forward with the project. And it would not affect the new twenty percent cap, which is being increased. The five percent cap is the self-generation cap under. Policy one fifteen was being expanded twenty percent. This is not even affecting it. It's in addition to, so it's it's a major boon for all S and P members. To have more renewables on on the system at a lower cost that will help prevent future rate increases. It's being blocked by Montrose County. Fingers crossed that it doesn't. You know, that that changes. Right now it's not working. Yeah, we'll see. And then back to the point is that this group that you brought up in your manager's report has been supported, spelled vocal. Who would go west then? Yeah, absolutely. Um, I was interested to see that. I was wondering if there was. Any interest on counseling in reaching out to the West End. Community Benefit Coalition to see if. We join forces because the the impact is regional. It's not just the West End. I think could maybe have even stronger voices. Just somebody pass.
They might have to change their name after their last story.
Oh, but. Yeah, they don't have to. I mean, they could. They can tackle what that looks like, but we can join forces on this issue. Like the the associate, I think we've seen in other ways that this. Council is participating in things, sometimes having a unified voice, not to mention that being on their. Planning where we get information and our type of rest meetings and what they're hearing instead of trying to. Like telephone information.
That's the body letters of support.
Exactly. Yep.
All right, if you're interested. We'll need to reach out to to Sarah Bachman. Yeah, I had to. There's that many minutes to see if they'd be interested in doing this, supporting something. In this direction. Anything else you want to highlight in your portion? Um, it's not in the report, but I just learned that uh Terra Genesis, the biosolar company there had everything in place. And we'll start a sled movement for biosol in three weeks. Um, so that's that's kind of exciting. Is there any, any temporary impacts to the? No, you can keep doing. Don't worry about it. No, I meant more to the. That smell coming out of the. Oh, that's a good question. Uh, not that I, it's a great question. I don't know, but I uh, it has been. So it it happens and tell someone else. That's okay. Yeah, it's to be right the targets on.
To go back to what led to my question uh in the strategic plan. I want to know about the financial implications so we can plan better for what's coming up this year for budget season. That's why. Yes.
You you mentioned the highway cleanup in your report and looking for a date.
Yeah, I would be, uh, me, me mention one of the things first, uh. Kim wheels came on to highlight the impact accelerator grant. Huge shout out to her, but she won as well with Action Partners for. Really spearheading that grant, or it wasn't a, so letter intent. Uh, for that impact salary, uh, grant opportunity. It is kind of a big deal that that uh we've been encouraged. To move forward to the full grant application. So part of Saturday's. Uh, retreat as we start to prioritize. Projects, initiatives, things to take on for twenty twenty-six. Uh, will be a conversation about this grant. Multi-year uh fiscal obligation that comes with. This really big opportunity. Kim highlighted uh how it's a five percent match depending on the tiers. It's kind of convoluted, but there's three tiers that we. Have applied for. It's realistic that we get the the first or second tier of upper level by five hundred K or ten million. And Kim told you uh amounts, small part amounts or exact amounts really based on. Uh, the batch. So for uh twenty about, yeah, twenty-five and a hundred K. Out of the net being a multi-year fiscal obligation and a lot to try to take on in. Two to three years. Across that planning horizon. So that I'm just trying to drive along that we're gonna have to talk through that on Saturday and get bolted a buy-in and forward with. An application. Does that make sense? Another data group that the third tier is called the vision tiers for five million, which is a kind of stretch goal. And we don't foresee there being um. That available because there's a significant amount of applicants. The five million in the budget that we presented to. The review committee included all the money necessarily going to most solar systems. State of mind to then provide the. The rec essentially to offset all the towns electric use, partly twenty, thirty net zero. Initiative. So it would be the 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 full circle of net zero. It's would be the renewable energy that then offsets all the electrical upgrades in towns. Jetting for the previous bunch of things we're gonna help fund. So. But because of feedback from the CEO. And the amount of um applicants, it doesn't appear that they're, you know, avoiding that much unless they really like. That would mean having two hundred fifty thousand dollars over multiple years. That's why I should get included. This is. Couple more things real quick. Um, on a recreational trail easement, Marion overlook. The um. Is it called the status of its uh. You know, the conference, uh.
Status conference.
Status conference is set for October eighth, which may evaluation year can be set most likely in March or April of next year. Uh, so I just wanna. Highlight that. Uh, even close to Dunn. So.
Question about that, if this may be for more for you.
Case management.
Case management. So at that time, will the valuation be based on when we try to.
Yes, it will be with just the possession.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
I have a question for one of your other point items, and just to be consistent with some of the comments, we're. Um, forwarding with regards to the effect of plastics on on the turf. Is there any issues around the use of plastic for to replace the iron pipe? I I know that, you know, when I when I thought about asking that earlier today, I realized that when I tapped into the water supply to my house, it's using a plastic pipe. So it's, you know, plastic delivered to my door from the main tap, but. Is part of these pipes with any issue with? I mean, they must be designed for low. VOC or whatever is. Can't be a purpose for the release of plastics in water system. Yeah, I'd be concerned about that at all. Just consistent with previous comments. Yes, I, that's a solid question. I'm I'm not an engineer. I haven't conducted this, you know, the studies and white papers that probably talk to that, but I mean. The the C nine hundred and PVC plastic materials, whatever one at the federal level and the state level. Really ushering. Our localities to go towards for a long time now, in the way I understand it, so. It must have been, question must have been. Been brought up years ago. I would imagine so.
Is probably better than most of the alternatives?
Well, yeah, certainly, but. Maybe it's. Is there any other plastic in the system right now besides the individual taps? Just kind of the actual mains? Uh, yeah, we have uh a lot of mains that are made of. Some sort of plastic materials, rattle off like C nine hundred and other PVC materials, others, I think, but uh. The only remaining ductile iron segment is what we're replacing now. Hmm, so so what else is? Um, at least some, you know, the the main distribution system. Service lines is a bit of a different deal, but we have a handle on that's what. Um, and then the Dr. Highway, she'll mentioned it. October's a busy month for all of us, and then November probably pretty chilly, but. You all wanted to try to set another time to.
Can this be something other town staff also talks with? Because it always, it always says we return councils committed to doing this, but if you're like town staff signs, it's a. I don't mind doing it, but the last few times I've done it, there's been four of us doing four miles, and it's a lot. We we signed us up back in the day, so you just didn't hear it in our agreement. It's just. But you know what I mean? Like, I feel like the last four times I've done it, it's four of us there. It's. The combo. But I will do it.
It's it's always been an issue. You're trying to get.
There's just not a lot of people.
Although the afternoon's joy to stand out. On their own.
Must be one of those, because I've never been.
For my, for my uh thing, October is not soon. But I will talk about that. The only Saturday I have. Now, October is the twenty-fifth.
Oh, yeah.
Um, if you want to pick a date.
I could do Saturday. The eighteen. Sunday, the nineteenth.
Oh, what month?
Should we look at early November?
The night, I could do the nineteen. Um. Are Sundays out? No, I was saying eighteen through nineteen. Yeah, because my Sundays are looking a lot better than my Saturdays. That's literally my only bit in October.
The nineteenth or?
The eighteenth or the nineteenth. I can do either.
You can do it last time. I saw, I saw.
So.
What about together? What about the first, the second? Of November?
I would do the first.
Do the.
Or the section on the first. No.
I still have a bunch of workshops that was on the eighteenth. That's out, right?
Yeah, I checked it. So. Who else is available on the first or second of November?
I am or the eighteen, they're not due.
I can't commit to anything between now and Thanksgiving. I can say that I'll be there, but it. Your role just magically changed in like two days. And I know that's all for you guys, but you'll.
I heard.
Thanksgiving too. Yep, um, so pick a date and I hope I can be there. I'm building on the first with.
What about the second?
Second, this is the day of the dead.
Great. Yeah, time is set. Locked out on your calendar?
Sunday, November second.
It's gonna be. It's absolutely gonna be. Trying to get it done as fast as we can. So it's gonna be real early. Is that the early? No, it's the late, the late ones, the late. That's the one.
All right, so we.
Till the second?
Tentatively the second, I'm afraid I'm a mistake. Sorry, guys. I think I stick my granddaughter.
Okay, I missed the last one. Yeah, and I already did that on the last one. I think this was less than not do the grass figure there again, because it was a little terrifying. Oh, that graphic, yeah.
And it was, it felt like late in the season where a lot of things were over from then. It might have been good to hit. I wasn't here on the planning, but it might have been good to hit it earlier.
Yeah, since we're staying to November, do we do, can we do it? Can we do a ten AM start? Yeah.
Totally. Not they are, they would make sure know that.
I don't know. I don't.
Great, you know, out of the ninety hundred, very science.
Thank you. Don't mess it's coming up. October sixteenth. Yeah, that's gonna be fun. Everybody's around town. I have things that I'm going to block together. Um. Uh, Michelle probably got to me that the planning commission name is incorrect here, I think. Why is it twenty seconds to the fifteen?
No, just checking. So it's a fifteen. Fifteen, okay.
Okay. And let's see. I don't know about the joke.
I like this one.
You like the joke?
Yeah. Was it yours, Bob?
No.
It seemed like one of yours.
Did she like it? Or she said it seemed like one of yours. I didn't, I said something.
Wow, that's pretty much.
Like, what's that?
Oh, I just asked that savage.
Yes, oh, that's a soul.
It's not. Thank you, Bob. So that's in those jokes.
Yes, keep submitting them. I think these first.
Oh, it's yours? Do you have like a book in your desk in case you don't have one and you need to.
All right, anything else? Anybody want to join me for your gorge on Saturday, eleven?
I'll be, I'm gonna be packing for a four-day camping trip with my creators.
Oh, boy. Quick, uh, this may be update. It's our team to fly for fleet education ring. That covers up to fifty percent of a trip vehicle. And there's been some extension done, so I do at least put in the SAB my. Take the lead on action partners applying for at least one um public works lightning. Loose discussion of solid mail today. Thank you. Um, so that nothing has been sanctified yet or codified that. That's. That and the fact that the SAB is going to be looking at trying to sometime. Twenty-six. So yeah, I saw that email exchange and it's just a bit premature. We talk on Saturday. Direction from the town council. That will inform next steps for. The fleet. Conversation, so. And I was just thrown that 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 Terry and I are going to Mount Taps twenty thirty next week. Awesome. Uh, so if you have anything you want us to make sure you bring up. You could order, you can do that, but should be good bet. We're up for some awards. We'll see. Yeah, actually, the Ridgway is up for three out of the four.
Wow.
Small towns doing big things, community here. John was nominated for the. What's it called? Accelerator thing, um. Exasperator. It's a little talent store. I'm not calling my breath on that one. There's way more. Um, anyway, it should be fun. Looking forward to it. Anything else for the order?
Um, I attended a an oil and gas on public lands uh discussion, and I was just wondering if anybody would be interested in see. I have access to the Zoom. I've got all the materials if anybody's interested in it. It was about an hour long. It was. Incredibly informative.
I think, what was the entity you put that on?
It was. The Wilderness Society, the Wilderness Society, took me a second, but it was a really, really, really interesting event to go.
There's a wildfire conference, something presentation this coming week. I'm not going to be here, but I think it's at the Space Gray.
It's Wednesday at the shirt.
At the shirt.
At the shirt.
Yeah. Did you staff come to that? No, there's a wild uh wildfire resilience code training, the land use storm in Baker the day before, about seven years more towards. It's uh. Cool. All right, anything else? We done? Seven twenty?
Not bad, I doubt.
Thanks, everybody.
Sorry, it was. Already whole man.